Going to have to replace some down at the fence for the ice skating rink. Because those, there are about ten of them. They're all, I don't, I'll get it. They're only a year old. But anyways, I plan on finishing that up today, down there. As long as I got the machine. I got the machine out there and so.
Should've done it on the weekend when it was seventy.
I couldn't get the machine. I agree with you. I asked to have it.
Long stick with a hook. That's how I do it.
What's that?
When you're going to put the legs up, you get on your ladder and you have a long stick with a hook to put the legs up. Oh, it's the only way you can do it. Preferably when it's re-ent.
Yeah, but the problem is that tree is sixty foot tall.
Oh, never mind. Mine's only twenty.
It's that one.
Mine's only twenty.
Yeah, our bucket truck won't even make it anywhere. So, um, I do have that. I guess. Why don't I go over that? Anything else you want to bring up with before I?
Um, the only other thing is, um, I attended a, what is called a CART. It's a county animal response team. We got certified for that through the county. It's actually part of the state. It's a mandated, non-funded again. Uh, mandate from the state that every county will have a CART set up. Um, one of the things that they are looking for, uh, Red Cross is involved with it as well as the Office of Emergency Services. Is they are looking for places for, um, during emergencies, be able to house not only some animals, but they're also looking for with the Red Cross, they're looking for places for people also. Um, there is a form that I did not bring with me today. I will be going to another meeting Monday. Um, I will bring that form in, uh, in case there is someplace here that we could open up for some temporary housing for emergencies, such as floods, forest fires, anything like that.
I appreciate you going to that and I knew you'd be the one to go. You operate, uh, your horse farm. So, um, yeah.
Was the dog control officer notified on that?
As far as?
What, as far as him going to that, to that tower place?
He got, um, notification on that. It was sent to, uh, board members to please see what they could do. And then to reach out to whom they wanted to in order to get shelter. So he, he would definitely be a good resource for the board. But they wanted the towns, um, to say whether or not they felt they could be part of that program.
Okay.
If we could shelter. It may not just be ours. It could be from, you know, town in the area. So, um, I appreciate you going to that. Now, in the CART, that was set up for, um, transportation purposes for?
Uh, well, they're looking into everything. Um, simple example is let's say, uh, something's going on up by Miners Farm. And they gotta get all the horses and cows somewhere. So, and that's what they're looking for is how to and where to.
To be available, maybe to contact some of the local, um, agricultural people. Uh, I do, like I say, I do appreciate looking into that and being able to go. Have a, like a Saturday too, wasn't it?
Yeah, Friday.
Friday?
Well, Saturday, certification on Friday.
All right, um, just, I guess it's a good spot. Is there any plug that in? And, and I'll go to you just because he brought it up if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead. Then I'll go.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, the second annual Scarlet Falls Townwide Holiday Festival. Will be Sunday, December fourth of twenty twenty-two. Uh, one P M Scarlet Falls at nine fifty-four Route twenty-two B Northville Road in front of the post office. Uh, that, again, I'll, that goes to Ryan's Masonary down there. Uh, three to seven P M, uh, River Street Park off of Mason Street. Four thirty P M, the tree lighting and at the town hall. Four forty-five P M, lighted fire truck parade, uh, with Morrisville and. I think you were gonna say.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Hold on. As far as the side by side, yes, sir. I will contact, um, uh, the sheriff's department to make sure that they're aware of the parade also. Um, just to give you a quick overview. One P M, this is in the hamlet of Scarlet Falls. Family tree decorating. Um, bring your ornaments and connect your, with your neighbors. Light refreshments, uh, compliments of Ryan's Masonary. Uh, three to seven P M, River Street in Morrisonville, uh, River Street Park in Morrisonville. Horse drawn wagon rides, uh, D J music and caroling. Family and kids activities, decorations, stories, games, trial, trail walks. Later, light refreshments, uh, continues roughly around seven at the Lake of Zeeville. Uh, four thirty P M, holiday tree lighting. Uh, this will be at the town hall right here in the front at nine nine seven Mason Street. Um, all's welcome for the countdown like we did before and we'll do a couple, uh, carols here. Right after the tree lighting at four forty, uh, the lighted fire truck parade on, will be on the move. Uh, it will go down Mason Street Hill, passing the town hall, left on Emery Street, onto Route twenty-two B. At the post office, right onto Mason Street again, and then left on the River Street, uh, down to Ladue Street. And the trucks will pause there momentarily for a while so that any of the, uh, kids want to go over and look at the lighted fire truck, they had a good time looking at them last year. Uh, five P M, a special dessert. Uh, Santa Claus will be there. Uh, he will be arriving and he will join for more family fun and festivity. So that's, uh, pretty much the overview. I want, I want to, oh, I want to thank, um, Mark for all the help with, uh, setting that up again. We've been conversing back and forth on it a couple of weeks now and, um, yeah, well, I'll throw something out there as far as the work be. So that we can get the rest of the stuff figured out on, when we're gonna bring it down there and have it all set up.
Hey Kevin, just, I've got a sheet here for volunteer participation. Cause on that day, we'll need help. Additional help is always welcome. For either serving the cookies, donuts, et cetera, that Stuart's has provided. Um, the drinks and also kids activities. We've got a cornhole set up and, you know, depending on the weather, we can't really tell yet. But, um, if anybody has some great things for kids to do, we have crafts and all. I know we, Heather, I'm glad you're here. I was gonna ask you. Cause we, we had a concern about the glue free.
I know, I know. We talked about that.
So, um, I mean, uh, so I've got some, a variety of things, but, uh, you know, if you can let me know. There's any questions or concerns or thoughts. So, there's flyers here.
Have we got a special guest lined up for this year?
I'm sorry?
Have we got a special guest lined up for this year?
Um, that's on Kevin's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, one way or the other.
But we would like, I didn't even ask you, a reader for the kids and stuff.
What time?
Let's see.
Just before five or something?
Yeah, that way because usually come up and help me with the tree lighting and then get back down there and get that done.
Okay, I'm, uh, first of all, I'm glad Mike M D is here. Uh, Mike, do you have anything you want to say about the training session in late classes? That we went through that day? He's new on the zoning board. His first meeting is Monday night. So, thanks for coming, Mike.
And that agenda should be posted.
Actually, Kevin, the agenda is up.
Yeah. I got.
Yep.
I just do them all now.
Okay. So now, in a case like that, whose responsibility was that? Was it the secretary for the zoning who would take care of that?
Well, happens is they, they bring it down to me.
Oh, do you?
And I still end up going through the, the same.
Okay.
And that, that, that holds true to, for the, um, planning board.
Sure.
Because they, they have to give a copy of the agenda to the town board. So when they're down here, they pull through the website.
Okay. And regarding the zoning board and planning board, certainly all dedicated, dedicated appointees and those, but they're appointed for a year at a time. And, uh, or no, the members aren't, but the chairman are. The chairman are. And I'm wondering maybe this year, when January comes up, if we could switch around and change some of the chairman out and put the deputy chairman up just to make it a little bit easier for them in case someone is absent. Is that a possibility that the board would?
Are you talking about the alternate versus?
No, I'm talking about the chairman. Chairman of the planning board.
Yeah.
Chairman of the zoning board.
Yeah.
And they are appointed for one-year terms by the town board.
Right.
And that's what I was wondering if I could ask the board to consider that.
Yeah, normally what we do is.
Twenty-three.
I try to stay neutral in either one of those areas because those are totally independent.
Right, yeah.
So we usually take the recommendations from either the Z B A board or the planning board on who they would like as chairman for those. Um, I haven't heard them express to me personally. I don't know. Maybe they have to you and I'm just not aware of it, that they would like to, um, switch who their chairs or vice chairs are. Um, Mr. McCaslin is the chair of the planning board and Mr. Frank Dorance is the chair of the Z B A board. Um, usually they would bring something to me saying, hey, uh, I no longer want to be chair of the board or the board would bring a recommendation. I haven't heard anything from them. I can reach out to them. I'm sure that, um, I think one of them's having their organizational meeting this month, correct?
On Monday, yeah.
So, um, we may hear something done. But, um, they're totally independent boards and I usually don't get involved with trying to switch out and tell them who the chair is gonna be. We usually hate to use that phrase, but, uh, remember stamp what they would like to do unless we find that there's a concern.
Okay. Uh, Sam, I'm glad you're here because I've got a question regarding, uh, the Leary situation. Are they done now with their project? With, with Leary and because the date on this?
To best of my knowledge, they're not because they haven't contacted me and they were supposed to contact me when they were ready to do the work.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as I knew, the last I've been involved with that, um, having spoken, uh, they were quite busy and they had a long term of jobs that they had to get completed. Because our stuff wasn't expected and it came early. So they had booked other things to get done at that point. So we're not, it's not done at this point as far as I know because they haven't contacted me.
Yeah, because this, I'm looking at a copy of the check, sixty thousand dollars, the insurance claim. The date on it is August thirtieth of twenty-one. So I think someone should reach out to them to get moving forward on this project. Because this is going on, uh, I believe that they've already received half of this, these funds. So, my God, I would think with that timeframe, something positive, they should be able to have a timetable when they're gonna be doing this. On that, have you heard from them?
The last I was told was that they were going to do it as soon as they were done, the projects that they already had in force and, and, uh, that they were doing.
Yeah, and I reached out to him also when I got the emails and he was surprised and asterisked that, uh, they weren't supposed to get the materials though, at least October or the end of October. So they, they hadn't even slated or scheduled the work. You have to remember also that everything is backed up because of the two and a half years of COVID. And they couldn't even get the supplies, much less getting help. Higher than most employees are having problems getting help higher. So I understand that he had his workers set up with jobs already through the, uh, fall. I was hoping, he was hoping he would get to it, but like he said, we have to schedule you and then come out and do the work, which is going, you know as well as I do, it's two parks and it's, uh, pretty extensive. And he's also working with a gentleman from, um, Miracle, is it Miracle Equipment?
Yes.
Miracle Equipment, uh, who is going to come out and make sure, I mean, the guy works right for that company. Okay. And to make sure. Huh?
Bob Pittinelli.
Thank you.
From Miracle Equipment.
Um, to make sure that the amenities are set up and erected correctly because he found a couple things that he didn't like the way that it was put together last time. And he said that there's certain things that need to be done. And he volunteered his time as part of it to come out and make sure. So I know there's a couple of different scheduling things that have to take place. And I don't know if they'll, they'll have time to do it this, this, this time of year or not, or if that'll be in the spring. But yeah, I've, I've been keeping an eye on it and so have you. Thanks for the reminder. And if that answers your question.
And my next item, I was hoping Bill Account was, would have been here and I, I've got several calls into him regarding this. I'm getting calls on not only the Rixon Avenue situation, but I'm getting calls on property at number four sixty Salmon River Road. It seems to be an abandoned building. The front, I drove by there the other day and the front door was wide open. And the neighbors over on Carter Court are very concerned with that situation over there. And, uh, the other one, I keep getting these calls being on that committee on codes. Um, the situation on Flat Rock Road where they had that burned out home about a couple of weeks ago, I believe, when that happened. And some of the neighbors are wondering what, what's on top here for the cleanup. It was a mess before, even more of a situation at this point. So I, I guess the owners are in Vermont. Mr. Account had said.
It, it, well, you, you know, the three properties there. If, if you're talking about the one on the Flat Rock Road, they are in Vermont, which was part of this eight oh three return on that paper served on, on that.
Okay, okay.
So those things are being, um, yeah.
Yeah, the one on Salmon River Road, the owner is in, from Vermont as well in that situation.
Again, the, the, the fire that you mentioned on, uh, the Flat Rock Road, I am aware. I went up and took a look at it the other day.
Yeah, it wasn't bad.
After I got a phone call from a concerned resident that even tin from the, the roof had blown across the road. It could have actually hit a car.
Oh, possible.
So, uh, it didn't, but it's still on the wrong side of the road now. So, um, unfortunately, like I said, our coach guy has been sick for over a week now.
I see.
And, um, I will reach out to him again because they do have shared services between the town of Plasker and us.
I see.
Even if, if needed, although they're, they're kind of stressed out and now trying to get their work done too. Um, but I will reach out to him again and let him know that, uh, if he could get ahold of somebody from town of Plasker just to get the ball rolling. Um, I've let them know that we are aware of those issues and they're being worked on.
And Kevin, my, my final item is regarding ARPA funds. Now, we have five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in ARPA. And.
Mine's already spent already.
Yeah. And we've got a major project coming up on Macy Lane that's gonna turn into probably more of a project. I, I know the estimate originally was going out a hundred and thirty thousand, but I really have an idea that might be a lot more than that situation. But that's ready to go. The board has already approved it all. It's ready to go. They're just waiting on it. Uh, I don't believe the final plans on that have ever been drawn up as of yet. But hopefully, what would you think in twenty-three, maybe the people on Macy Lane can expect something?
No, actually, I just got the draft from La Verge, uh, of the final plans. For Macy Lane, called me maybe two days ago. Um, so the next work session, they would like us to review those plans as a board to make sure that we don't want any changes or whether we're happy with what the, uh, final, the draft did, or draft of the final plan. So that, I would believe could start the beginning of twenty-three, in the spring of twenty-three.
That'd be great for those people.
Yeah.
And my last item regarding ARPA is the project on Rixon Avenue. And I'm concerned with it because that project, actually, I think I'm the one that started bringing up the water situation on Rixon over three years ago. When there was a P F O A problem and like it's been confirmed, one of the four still has that. Pretty serious deal. And the other three have got bad water tests, bacteriological problems. So anyway, and we've worked on that three years ago, of getting public water down Rixon Avenue. So I'm looking at the plans, the proposed plans. And what, what I'm troubled with is if the plans as being drawn up by La Verge Engineering. All of a sudden, we went from providing water for four homes. Now, all of a sudden, the plans are to go over on private property and to service a seven or eight acre parcel of a private developer. And what that does, and I studied this plan, what it does, it increases the diameter of the water line. Thereby practically triples the cost of the project. And the thing is, I know we've got a lot of ARPA money, but still I think we should try to, try to be conservative with spending it because we can use it on different projects around town. And we have until the end of twenty twenty-four to do it. And so that's really being on the water committee. I really feel that way because that's exactly what they want to do. And I think it's wrong. I think it's wrong. Now, if that private property, the developer over there wants to join in. And if that developer wants to pay for the mapping, the survey, the deeds, the legal fees, everything else that goes along with it. And if he wants that developer, if he wants to increase that water main from four inch to eight inch, if he wants to pay the town the difference, sure, hook in. But we need a contract with this person. I'm not against that. I am against spending ARPA funds on private property. That's really, I'm, those people need public water. I'm all for this. It's been ongoing. And when I had written the letter to the county health department asking that anyone with a P F O A situation could be added on to the weekly water delivery like we have on the sand road right now. If they could simply just add that name on. So the one with a P F O A, we're sure they're getting good water. And I'm really, this situation is ongoing. We have just paid on, on an invoice and La Verge Engineering has got a contract on this. Their contract clearly says fourteen thousand five hundred plus costs. And their contract is for Rixon Avenue only. And all of a sudden, I'm sitting back and they prepared another big map. And my name's on the front of it, of course, with everyone else. And I'm opposed to it. And, and, and the night they submitted a bill, I voted no on it. And now is a good time for us to intervene. Because according to the contract right here with ARPA, the town board is responsible for spending any of that ARPA money, any of it. So that is my frustration and concern. That's all. And just speaking of Rixon Avenue, they're saying they're gonna develop, they're saying the reason why they want that big of a line is because they want to put fire hydrants down there. Where there's already two fire hydrants on Mason Street right near there. And the cost of a new fire hydrant, two of them, they want to put on there for a six hundred and fifty foot line. And it's all building the expense up. And it's gotta be stopped. We've gotta meet with La Verge. We have gotta take this contract. And if they have billed us already for, for any of that work to do with a private developer, they, all they've gotta do, La Verge, adjust your bill back, put it on one of the other projects you have going in the town. I don't, not blaming La Verge, it's work. And I, that, that's, that's it. And the thing is, those other building lots down there, the future building lots, they're trying to say, they're only a hundred feet by a hundred feet. They're not big enough to ever put a home on. And it's simply in that, in that way, we're, we're wasting ARPA money. And that's really what's going on. And I'm, I'm on the water committee and I'm obliged to bring this up. I'm just trying to do my job on it. It's not fun, but that's it. And in terms of Rixon Avenue, and you've got this junk all over the place down there. I'm not sure how they're gonna be putting water lines in when you've got a junkyard down there. So I'm sitting here for the four residents who live on that street. That's all. And thank you. Thank you. That's it.
All right, um, we've been up there a couple different times. The business owner to clean that up. And I specifically, I have told him that we can't do anything with the water up there in double S.
Sure.
Cause you can't move up there. So that, that'll have to be addressed. Um, we always try to do it amicably first, but if we need to go through.
Right, of course.
Fire paperwork, that's a different thing. As far as, um, the water line up there, I believe that that diameter has never changed. For fire flow, the minimum that you can have is an eight inch main. And that has never changed from the, the beginning of the plans of it. So I'm not quite sure why you come up with the information that the, the size of the line has changed. Uh, the, the, the hydrants are important and now part.
I understand, Kevin. I understand that.
And hydrants are important to all new water lines, not only for fire flow so that they have fire protection. Um, you're right, there's a hydrant up there on the end and there's one about midway. Uh, but you're still looking at probably five to six, maybe seven thousand feet of five inch that would have to be dropped by a fire department truck to, to get this. And there's a pretty good sized business back there. So, um, again, that's why, one, two of the reasons why you normally keep a, um, a fire hydrant. They are expensive, um, with any new water system that you put in to bring it up to, uh, normal codes of today. The other thing that they use those hydrants for and why they put them on the end of the, those lines were for flush. Okay. Cause that's how they flush the lines out so that they're not, they're not gonna be a deadhead otherwise. And that way they, they can keep the, the pipes, if you will, flushed. And they also do testing at the end of the line. So that they can test that particular line to make sure that it meets the health standards. Because otherwise, if we do it at the beginning of the road, all we're doing is testing the main.
Yeah.
Testing that. And it's the same as Macy Lane at the end.
Right, I'm very familiar with Macy Lane.
Those, those are, like I said, uh, just to try to answer some of those questions for you.
But somebody, apparently someone told the engineering firm to start consulting with a private contractor on this project.
From the beginning, okay, first of all, he may not have earned a business. I, I have no knowledge that he is a developer or developing that area out there. Okay, or has plans to develop in that area. There was from the beginning, from our conversations right through the. There was from the beginning, from our conversations right through the beginning, that there was talk of income service work that he would be willing to provide to make sure that the three residential homes up there that they live in also have water. And it only made good sense at that time if we were getting water to the four or the business or five or seven lots, depending on size and what they could do with them, to include the other three. They're still residents and taxpayers of the town.
Well, of course, they are. However, on Trombley Way, and I've got the map of it here, there's already a water connection right at the end of their proposed entrance. So why would they want to go onto town property and then cross over on private property? We're going to be putting, if, if this goes forward, we're putting a water main on private property. It doesn't make sense. If they want to put water on their property, go out to Mason Street and connect on to the water main, which there is a connection there according to this map. There's a connection there already.
Yeah, and that's the same thing that anybody, we could tell the same people on, on Rickson Avenue to do the same thing. If you want water, then run a water line all the way out to the main. Okay?
Well, no, not, not at all because we've done an income survey for those people, and they're eligible. They are in the lower.
We, they were not in the water district. We did not do.
I know they're not in the water district.
We did not include them in the income survey.
Well, there, there was an income survey done on Rickson Avenue.
There was an income survey done for the Morseville Water District. And if somebody went up there and had them in, which they wouldn't, because I know that Liz Tedford was in charge of that.
I've spoken to her many times.
And she had the addresses of who, the, the people that were in the water district, and they are clearly not in the water district at this time. They would have to be added into the water.
Oh, I know, Kevin. I know.
But like I said.
But the whole thing, the whole idea, getting back to the basic idea, is why are we using ARPA money to do that on private property? We can't do that.
Reggie, everything is private property. I don't care where you live or where the water line is. The water lines all go through private property. There is an easement or a right of way for the utilities that go through their property alongside the road. So I, I, I don't understand where you're going with that because all, all of our water lines, other than that, are actually on property that is owned by the town, are individual in nature and owned by that resident. Your, your theory, Reggie, that we wouldn't be able to put a water line down anywhere if we had to buy.
No, that's not my point. Well, and I'm asking that that project could be.
We can discuss that at a, at a work session because it is almost eleven thirty. If you're good with that, we can bring that up like you say and talk about it.
Okay, when is the next work session?
Well, we have two scheduled, and we'll get to those if we ever get done with me. I have a date. Let me get them to you now.
I'll have them. It's all right. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. It's councilman. Mike, finally, anything going on other than I hope that you.
Well, I'd like to. The guys are working real early hard to get this special meeting. Sure. I thought I had the man coming. I'll know more in another half hour, I hope. So I appreciated the call and all your hard work for, to organize it. As you can see, we've been out plowing and sanding. We finally got the salt and sand up halfway decent. You know, we're ready for winter. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I know you and I worked for about two weeks to try to get this new hire done in a timely fashion. And that's why we did all the paperwork ahead of time.
Oh, yeah.
So that he would be ready to go after the resignation. I felt bad after he had already put a resignation into his other job and he told me that we were hired the next day. And that didn't happen. And that's the problem is that it affects, this happened, that they did not have a meeting that night affected adversely somebody that was in the site and the whole thing.
Kind of beating a dead horse on you, aren't you?
Yeah. No, I was just, all I was doing is just thanking everybody for.
No, no, you're not doing, he's not talking to you.
No, I know, but I, this is, this is, that's all I, I didn't want to beat a dead horse.
Yeah.
I'm just glad that you organized it to.
And that you need help.
Did you have any applicants, Mike?
No, just that one again.
Yeah, two there out there in the lane.
Yeah. Yeah. They're real. They're, they're dead horses now.
One, okay. You have one opening now for a truck driver though, still.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this is, you got a mechanic then coming in?
Yes, both, yeah. He worked for Clark's for a while.
Okay.
And he has a Class A CDO. He can actually do, uh, he can actually do transportation work.
Yeah.
The class Ds can't. So, you know, he can, he can run trip, doubles and triples down the road. So he comes.
Yeah.
Be an asset all the way around. But we'll get to his bill after. Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, thank you too.
Yeah. Don't turn on the water other than what we did.
I think you covered it.
Okay. Safety and Codes is not here. He is ill. Town clerk?
Just that the annual budget was given to all your councilmen, and there are extra copies if anybody wants them.
Okay, thank you. I've got nothing from the assessor this time. Planning board didn't meet. Doc control, it's got his report. I do not have the attorney tonight. I'll let the historian say whatever, if she has anything. All right, work continues on the prospect of, again, a new website manager. We are looking to ensure that the town website is functional and existing issues are corrected by yours. And I did look up that contract. We're contracted with him until about February, unless we do something to remove him. Again, I kind of alluded to this under the permit one. Selective insurance, we have completed the annual review. Our local agent is putting coverage out to bed. This is completed every three years to ensure that our rates are competitive in the insurance industry. We have approved the town budget for the year 2023. Other than adding money to be placed into the budget for improvement projects, the general and highway budgets are under the two percent tax gap. The general remained at thirty cents per thousand, and the highway had a modest increase from two dollars and eighty-one cents per thousand to two dollars and ninety-one cents per thousand. So like I said, other than the capital improvement projects, it would have been underneath the two percent. And those monies are already in our account down here, so that will not cost the taxpayer anything extra. Update on Rickson Avenue, I guess we've already talked about that, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse. There is one resident up there that will be getting an appointed entry system. They are considered a short-term solution, and it would be taken back out if we get the water line put in, the public water line. And that's from Mr. Davies down in the Health Department. I just covered a second annual holiday festival, so I am not going to put you through that again. But I just want to say that last year, it was widely attended. Everybody had this, that attended seemed to have a good time. They wanted to know if we were going to do it again this year. It's a ton of work. We'll try to make, everything is at least as good as last year's, and we'll try to, again, make that an annual event continuing in the future. All right. So unless anybody has any unfinished business or new business, I'll go right to resolutions. So resolutions today are twenty-two ninety-three through twenty-two ninety-eight. Okay, resolution twenty-two ninety-three. A motion by be resolved that the town board acknowledges that the twenty-twenty-two total re-levelling water bills in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and nine cents for the Morseville Water District, seven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars fifty-three cents for the Woods Mills Water District, and one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents for the Macy Lane Water District be set to the county for collection in the twenty-twenty-three land taxes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Mr. Facto, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
So approved. Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-four. Motion be resolved that the town board of the town of Scotts Falls re-appoints Philip Van Haver, and bargain, excuse me, to the Board of Assessment Review, appointment effective immediately and to expire on September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven. Could I get a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Newton?
Second.
Mr. Facto, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Resolution twenty-two dash ninety-five. Motion be resolved that the town board of the town of Scotts Falls appoints Maurice Minor to fill the unexpired term of Roland Dazna on the Board of Assessment Review. Appointment effective immediately and to expire on September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. Could I get a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Newton? I'll second it. This is being.
Discussion on that? Is there, is there a list, is there a list of people who want to serve on various committees? Like if someone writes you an email, you create a list of a person who might want to be on the Board of Assessment Review or Planning Board or zoning board or any boards?
Okay, so I did have a list for the ZBA. There were two individuals that we actually did put on there.
Sure.
Those were, I think we missed one name though, that somehow slipped through because there was no openings at the time, and they didn't get put on the newer list. I'll apologize to that person because I had no idea. It, it goes back a few years when they.
Sure.
Had asked, requested to be on it. But yeah, I, right now, I have no active list of anybody that's contacted me on any of the boards to, to answer the question, not this time.
Can I add something, Kevin?
Sure.
This appointments, appointments for the Board of Assessment Review are usually recommended by the assessor. And this Mr. Minor, he likes to have him in different areas, you know, for that, for the five members.
Sure.
Mr. Minor is Jerome Minor's son and would be honored to be on this, to take over his father's position.
Sure.
See the trooper?
No.
So again, you know, they, they do break them up into districts, and he's there well aware.
Makes sense.
Yeah, that way they're more represented by the people that are in their area. You know what I mean? So they try to make it, did that answer?
Sure, they did.
Roll call.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Twenty-two dash ninety-six. Motion be whereas Michael Snyder, Highway Superintendent, has a position at the Highway Garage for MEO slash mechanic, and whereas applications were submitted and candidates were interviewed by Mr. Snyder, be hereby resolved that the town of Scotts Falls acknowledges and approves the hiring of Sean LaPlante for the position with a starting salary of twenty... Is that correct?
Mary said it was, yeah.
Should be.
Okay. I know we got the new contract, right? I know they start with a dollar less an hour. If there's any changes, we'll let the public know. All right. At a start, a starting salary of twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents an hour. I mean, a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Facto?
Second.
And Mr. Newton, any discussion?
Will be the new starting date?
Immediately.
Yeah. Monday, once I, once I call Mary, as soon as I leave here.
So we'd be looking at a starting date now of the twenty, eleven twenty?
It's whatever Monday is. Six o'clock Monday morning.
Yeah. She just asked, just, it's because the, the state retirement and everything else, that the date has to be the date he's hired.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's another thing.
So then his actual date would be the nineteenth then?
Today is the nineteenth.
Twenty-first.
No.
Monday morning.
Twenty-first, Monday, yeah.
Should be Monday morning, yeah.
Okay.
His date will be.
So that would be his actual hire date is the twenty-first.
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Facto?
Yes.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Finally.
Yeah. Pulling away at it. Twenty-two ninety-seven. Motion be resolved that the town board of the town of Scotts Falls authorize a hiring of a curtain archaeological consultant incorporated to undertake Phase One A and Phase One B of the proposed Morseville Water District.
Project, we should add a project after that, you know, that project.
The first phase of that would be two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. The second one B would be two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. This would be a direct hire from the town. That way, La Verge doesn't have to get twenty percent by being the middle person. This is needed, one of the many things that are needed to try to get the project put out to bid to make sure it is feasible. If we don't continue with the project, it will die. That's pretty much what this is. Is, do I have a motion from somebody?
Motion.
Mr. Newton?
And I'll second it.
This archaeological report, this firm, once again, this firm is out of the Albany, New York area. And my concern is this, couldn't we, I mean, for a five thousand dollar, over five thousand dollar situation, couldn't we contact firms, Clinton, Essex, Franklin County, to get estimates on this archaeological study?
Well, these archaeological studies can go up in the hundreds of thousands, okay? So basically, what they do is they take a preliminary look at them and see whether they could see anything on the surface that would be substantial before they even put in a bid on it, okay? I don't know of anybody locally. This comes out of the state, at the state level, that we are required to make sure that prior to the project approval, that we're not going to come into any Native American, you know, sites or, or things like that that happened with the city of, or the town of Glassburg, like down where their old airport was, where they, they found the encampment down there, which helped that project up for years. There's, there's several multiple alphabet names of the historical state preservation that get involved with this. This is pretty minimal as far as cost. I don't know of anybody locally that does this to answer your question.
What, where would this fund be drawn out of? This particular expense? Would it be out of? Would it be out of the Morrisonville Water District?
Yeah.
Funds?
Yeah. It'd be on their, as they're on LK funds, yeah.
I feel like not supporting it, but there's, if you don't want, there's only three of us, so, you know, this is a time I'll back off and go ahead, do it.
Well, we got to vote first.
No, no, we got to vote first.
Just a quick comment from the historical perspective. I mean, I did look at this area as well, but my, you know, I have no certifications or anything. I've recently looked at a list of consultants for a variety of different areas, not specifically for archaeological, but across the whole country in terms of, there are not very many of these people, certainly not up here. There's not really a need for somebody to be up here. So I'm, I'm, to get somebody out of Albany, I think, is is fairly reasonable.
Pretty close.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's my only input. Again, not having looked for that in my list of consultants out of one of the, you know, conservation consulting. I can do that.
I want to, I would ask her, but she's involved in stuff like this.
Yeah, I know, you, I broached out something, too, but.
But to the, to the, the best of my information, this is very reasonable.
Absolutely.
And it is probably one of the closest ones that we've used. I don't know of anybody locally to answer your question.
What particular location within the water district are they going to be doing?
They'll take the whole, remember the maps and the whole thing they have for the Morseville Water District?
Oh, so various spots all around.
No, the whole, they have to look at the whole thing and make sure that wherever the lines are going.
Yeah.
That they, and we have a shovel in the ground, that we're not going to disturb something that we shouldn't be disturbing. And it makes, even though it's a pain to go through all this regulation, it really does help. Because if you're halfway through a project and all of a sudden you uncover something that you didn't know was there, it could cost a lot more to the project in the long run than looking up ahead of time.
Yeah, see, this, this would be something similar to, we'll probably end up doing this on Rixon Avenue as well. Right by the time, I mean, here we are, Rixon Avenue, location of a super fun cleanup site, and they're going to be doing an archaeological study in there. So that might be a more expensive one, wouldn't you think?
It, it's, it's based more on history than it is based on what the ground is or what it's composed of. It's what's, what's of archaeological importance in the ground.
And I'm assuming probably SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office.
That's one of the alphabets.
Yeah, so SHPO has, has likely looked at, as they looked at everything that's historical that's being done in the town for our other, other things, too. And they have lots of resources that they've gotten in the.